Row, Kyle.
Mayor Conneball.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bill Costner.
Here.
Alderman John Bug.
Here.
Alderman Freddie Gregg. Alderwoman Kathy Hope.
Here.
Alderman Kenny Morgan. City Attorney Terry Hurst.
Here.
City Administrator James Fincham.
Here.
Thank you. Do we have any veterans in our attendance tonight? If you would, please stand. They deserve a round of applause. Item 3 will be approval of the minutes. Item A is the regular session, October the 8th. You have those minutes in your binder. You've got a chance to look those over. Are there any changes or additions? Or do we have a motion to approve as written?
I'll make the motion.
Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes no. I hear none. Item B is the special call meeting, October the 22nd. Same applies. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
We have a second.
I'll say it.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes no. I hear none. Nothing under item 4. Item 5, correspondence from city administrator James Fincham.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to bring you up to date on the tax anticipation note. We hope to finally have that in hand next week. We've had to jump through some hoops we didn't have to in the past. They put some new regulations in and some of them are old regulations that hadn't been enforced. And we've got somebody new in the comptroller's office who's been a little more thorough in making sure that all the paperwork is done. The downside to that is it's strung out the process and it's also cost us $1,000 that we didn't plan on having to spend. We had to... Basically, we had to get a letter from a bond counsel stating that we actually needed to borrow the money, that we weren't just borrowing the money to invest it in something else and try to make money on it. So we thought at first that Mr. Hurst could write the letter. U.S. Bank indicated to have him write one and they'd sent it up the chain through their system. When it went to the higher-ups and their corporate people, they rejected that and wanted the same letter from a bond counsel stating that we needed it. So that has been done. Now it's just a matter of letting it work its way through the process of U.S. Bank and we should have those funds no later than next week unless we hit another snag. The second thing, we think we gave you all a copy of what we're trying to do with the Christmas lighting. As you all know, you all, earlier in the year, at the end of last year, the Christmas season, excuse me, you all tasked Kelly Stokely with trying to do something with the Christmas tree. She's got it shaped up, she's got new lights for it, she's working hard with it. She's done just a phenomenal job with all the things she's taken on as a volunteer and she has really turned this thing into an event, the lighting ceremony. We have worked together and formed a little committee and tried to make it into something really nice. It's going to be called a Small Town Christmas Celebration. It'll be December the 6th. We're going to have the tree lighting ceremony. She's going to have all kinds of things going on down there. She's talked with a lot of the downtown merchants about staying a little late that night and doing things and we want to have some events going on here at City Hall. One thing, certainly want to encourage you all to come that night to that. I think the mayor, if she's not already... She's going to ask the mayor, I think, to be the emcee that night down at the lighting event. I don't know if she had contacted you about that yet, but she had indicated to me that's what she was hoping to do and I told her I was confident you'd be willing to do that and we appreciate that.
So I can say and do whatever I want?
Yeah, you're in charge, buddy. One thing that we're looking at doing, we're going to do a little different down here at City Hall. You know, the past few years, we had done the Santa's Land just in the backyard. To try to incorporate this, it's more about the town and not about City Hall. We are going to have some things going on here, but this is not going to be the focal point. It's going to be kind of the ending point for the night. It's going to start at the Christmas tree and work its way through town and end here. And we are going to have... We did get a Christmas tree. Appreciate you all handing up out of your funds to get that for us. We got one on sale and then bust the bank. And so we are going to have Santa Claus down here. We're going to give out treat bags. The mayor has come up with funding to pay for that. There's going to be no taxpayer dollars involved to do the treat bags for the kids and let them come by and see Santa Claus. We're going to have some things going on outside. We've got some people that's going to come. We're really working on getting the front looking really good and Christmasy outside for that night. And so we want to... We think if the weather will cooperate, I think it'll be a very nice event. One thing I would like your permission to do, I'm not sure I have to have it, but I don't like doing anything that y'all aren't on board with. Kelly has really taken this thing and run with it and I don't want to hold her back too much because she's, you know, you don't want to discourage her, but you know, she's very ambitious and I really admire that about her. But in case we need to, because you never know how big you're going to... How many people's going to show up. If we need to, I'd like your permission to block the street right in front of City Hall if we need to, because we don't want anybody to get hit. We've got people lined up out here coming in to see Santa or whatever. We may see the need, be prepared, have barricades set up in case we need to, put them out there. But I'd like y'all's permission, if we need to. If we don't need to, we won't do it. But if we need to, just to block the street right in front of City Hall, that wouldn't affect like the crossovers here or here at the funeral. It'd just be right in front of us right here. But that may be something we need to do. You don't know. It's the first time we've tried to do this exactly this way and so it may... There may not be a lot of people, may not be an issue, but if it starts looking like we're going to need it, I'd like to be able to block it right in front of us right here if we need to.
Any more problems left?
Well, if we had a... Fast a resolution authorizing the city administrator to work with the police chief and closing that if the council so desires, if needed.
We have a motion?
I'll make a motion for it. Because I certainly don't want some little kid getting around over coming to see Santa Claus.
Yeah, that's...
That's not...
That's a problem. I'll say it.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes no. Thank you.
That's all I got.
I will add to the Christmas deal. Rusty Wallace Ford, Greg Von Cannon, the owner, is the sponsor for our Santa land here at the City Hall and he is going to be advertising this on his commercials, so it'll be over a large area. Thank you. Under item 6, just in way of announcing that Ronald Lindsay has been appointed back to serve on the Fire Civil Service Board by the civil service. So that's just for your information. Item 7, a report from Tanner Preservation Alliance. Anyone here?
I guess I'm not going to hear that. I'd just like to report that we had our town meeting on October the 22nd and we managed to fill the room with... Many people came out for the attendance. And I think we've got... Our goal was to let people know that we are... We have done phase 1. The building is stabilized, the roof is repaired and so we're working on stage 2 and planning our stage 2, which would be to have the building assessed by an architect and give us a scope of work of what needs to be done and some kind of cost, because we really don't know what the cost is going to be. So I think it was a good meeting. The attendance was great and we hope to be planning our next meeting first of the year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, one other thing. I wanted to say that we had an opportunity to attend three preservation conferences in the last two months. And at every conference, we were pleasantly surprised that the topic of the Tanner Building was part of the presentations. Dr. West, who has been appointed by Governor Haslam as the state historian, did a very extensive presentation on the Tanner Building and the likelihood of it being a good project for any community and certainly one for Newport. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no old business moving to new business. Item A is consideration of the first reading of ordinance 2013-18 fireworks tent permit fees. Council, any discussion or a motion to approve on the first reading?
I think, Mayor, Mark may want to have to address that. We... The state planner that he was working with to draw that up got sidetracked somehow and did not get that to him, so he does not have an ordinance.
So we just need to move that to the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Please. Will do. Thank you. Item B is consideration of first reading of ordinance 2013-19 bypassing a traffic control device.
And I will read that ordinance into the record, or at least the caption. It's ordinance number 2013-19 and ordinance of the city of Newport, Tennessee on bypassing a traffic control device.
That's like going through somebody's property to...
Avoid the red light.
Okay.
Or stop sign.
I will make a motion that we could disapprove.
Okay. We got a motion on the first reading. We have a second.
I'll say it.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes no. I hear none.
And of course, we'll need a public hearing prior to the second reading.
Right. Item C is consideration of resolution 2013-17 adding finance director to city bank accounts.
As you know, it's just kind of a... It's just a technicality. She needs to be on all of them and you all have to vote to put her on them, so...
That's a no-brainer on my promotion.
Okay. We have a second.
I'll say it.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes no. I hear none. Item D is consideration of resolution 2013-18 closing the bottom portion of McNabb Street.
It's like this. That's why I take turns.
Yeah. Terry, I think it would be in order if you would be willing to take this and look it over before any approvals made on this to make sure everything is in order.
I just looked at this prior to the meeting and during the meeting, Mayor, and obviously there was a lawsuit involved in this when the Chancery Court rendered a judgment on an easement to the Smallwood property. And that may or may not affect closing the bottom half. I'm not sure, to be honest. So I would suggest we at least put this off.
Okay.
Make sure it... Because if we can't close any part of it legally, then any action we took would be void.
Okay.
So there's no reason... I don't think there's any urgency in closing it. Is it, Mark? Mark? There's no urgency in closing this?
No, there's no urgency other than both the property owners have been at various meetings in the last...
Right. They're both here.
Due diligence would be a good idea.
Sir?
Due diligence would be a good idea.
Is everybody okay with that? Anybody opposed to letting Terry look that over? Item E is consideration of waiving interest and penalties for 2009 property tax on 336 West Broadway that we discussed at the workshop. Any discussion or a motion to approve that?
I want to say this. In the fact, we're going to pay for a book from Laura and on her 2010, '11, '12, it showed nothing where they did owe back taxes. They were not given any prior notifications.
Okay.
And so I do think that we... I'll make the motion to waive the penalties.
Okay. We have a second.
Completely out of interest?
Yes.
Any discussion?
I got a question.
Yes.
We are talking about the interest and penalties.
Yes.
I'd like to know what... All I'd like to know is, how much was the check that was wrote from the bank in 2009 for that tax? Was it $488?
Well, the check was actually... I... When I went to pay them, I did the 336 and the 558 together. And when I went to try to find the receipts, I could only find part of 2009, so I did not get what the difference was paid. The maximum amount that was supposed to have been paid was $1,803 and that was the amount that I got from Lane's office.
Is that how much you paid?
They're saying that was not paid, that that was the portion that did not get paid.
Did you know that it was... See, you're saying that I want to pay the taxes and I don't understand, because you said four times the other night that they, the bank, wrote the check, so we never know how much this check was.
Right. And I thought we had paid all the taxes for 2009 and every receipt I had at the bottom said paid in full and even on my tax cards, you know, because somebody had said when you had back taxes, it should be in the rollover, the rollover portion of your bank.
Yeah, I saw paperwork.
And I did not have anything that ever indicated we had back taxes until we got this letter saying the property was going to be sold and it's still in there on this side. And I'm really still a little bit, you know, I was confused, you know, because like I said, only even the tax card, the tax card for the property itself, it had no back taxes, you know, at the bottom.
It should have been rolled over to the next year, they said, still 18 years, wherever you owe it was then.
Right.
And the way they're starting doing it, it's going to get a lot of confusion. They used to do it, the reason I know this, I was on county court. You wouldn't allow pay 2010 tax unless you paid 2009. But now they're doing it, taking partial payment and that's really going to get things messed up, because if it don't roll over to next year and you paid full, but you don't pay that, that's going to end up like Yow in the lobby and you don't want to pay... You might know you owe it, you might not. But your office went to the bank and I went and seen paperwork from the bank. They just say, well, we paid up to there, but you got statements that says paid in full.
Yes. And the tax card, it says no rollover taxes.
And no rollover taxes. And that's something people want to start watching. If you're not paying, they should roll it over. Where the next year's did, say $1,000, you owe $1,013, well, there it should be a rollover.
That was my question. I just want to know if the check was wrote. You said the check was wrote.
Per portion, portion of all that.
They said the check was wrote. See, that's what... The problem is, the check was wrote, but it wasn't paid.
Right.
Now, if that's me, they've come and got me, you know. I mean, I'd already be in jail. My cousin, my husband would come get me. That's the only problem I got with... Get this caught. Anyway.
That's the only question we got. We got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Row, Kyle, please.
Tommy Hood?
Yes.
Bill Costner?
Yes.
Kathy Hope?
Yes.
Kenny Morgan? Freddie Gregg? Tommy Hall?
I don't get to vote. Can't jump with that. Thank you. Item F is consideration of bids for a truck for Parks and Rec. We have a motion to approve the bid process.
I make... I think it was a bid, I guess you bought it twice.
Oh, mine didn't have that on it.
No.
Let's go ahead and do the truck and then we'll come back to this one. We have a motion to allow bids to go out for a truck.
I'll make that a motion.
We got a second? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes no. Okay, now to consideration of sewer plant waiver for a tank.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, the Newport Utilities wastewater plant was requesting a waiver on a 35-foot setback on a peroxide feed tank at the wastewater plant. We meet all the requirements of the code except for the 35-foot setback on the tank and the code requires 35-foot setback from the road and from a building. I consider the structure that it's sitting beside of as an influent pump station. You all have a picture of it on your... I'll lay the picture for everybody. Yes. It's a solid concrete structure. The peroxide cannot cause it to oxidize and cause a flame, so I'm asking a waiver from you all so that we can leave the system where it's at instead of having to move it. It meets all of our requirements of where it needs to be set and if we move it from its existing set, we're going to have to do a lot of work to put the water, the feed lines to it and also the control wires to it to cause it to operate like it should. So it does not meet the 35-foot setback from the building. So all I'm doing is asking the council to approve the waiver so that we can leave it where it's at.
I'll make the motion that we won't do it.
I'll say it.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Discussion?
I just need to make a point and need to come on record that it is violation of the code and I can't be for it because it's a violation of the code. So I just want to go on record that if you vote for this, then you're going against the recommendation of the fire coefficient.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Carol, do you explain to them about filling it up, the reason you want to leave it there?
Where it's at, if we fill the tanks, the tanker can get off the road, be out of the lane of traffic. If we move it 35 foot from the building, the tanker would have to sit on the road to unload, which in my point of view would be more of a safety hazard than where it's located at now. Because you'd be unloading 5,000 gallons of peroxide sitting on the main right away on La Seega Boulevard and you all know what the traffic's like on La Seega Boulevard.
What's the building design?
This is... It's useless, that's all. It's solid concrete. And it does not meet the code. I mean, it's 35... It says can't be within 35 foot of a building. Well, you know, the definition of a building in the FAR code says that, you know, if people enter it, then it's a building. I call it a influent pump station. We enter it once a day to get samples and other than that, it's got three pumps and electrical control panels in it, so...
Actually, that's just a bill about the fire code. It's any structure used or intended for supporting or sheltering any use or occupancy. It doesn't say it's set for limited occupancy. I mean, that's why I'm going to go with that. So this is what it goes. So that's my... My body.
Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes no. I hear none.
Thank you.
Okay, consideration of bids for a blower for Parks and Recreation. Do we have a motion to approve that bids be accepted?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes no. I hear none. The last item is the consent agenda. There will be a roadblock at Long Creek Volunteer Fire Department on November the 23rd, 2013. Do we have a motion to approve that on the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes no. I hear none. Final item is under item 10, consideration of asphalt bids.
Mayor, we put out for bid, as we have to do every year, for asphalt, for paving within the town. We only received one bid, as has tended to be the pattern for several years, as I understand it. So you only have one bid for consideration, so I guess you can approve it or reject it, but Ben has looked at it. He said it's probably well-consistent with what we had last year, so my recommendation would be to accept it and move on.
Okay, we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
We have a second?
I'll make the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes no. I hear none.
And sir, just for the record, I would say that that's with Newport paving.
Newport paving, okay. Thank you. Comments from citizens?
Well, Mayor, I know Dr. Stephen Smith was here who wanted to comment on the fireworks ordinance. He asked me if we were going to consider it tonight and I told him it was on the agenda. I don't know if he has any comments or not, but...
Do you have a comments? Any comments?
I was here just for just to be informed if what's going on.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
We've gone through all of them and I've been here several times here. I have some, is there any way that y'all could afford to take the place because they're representing the town and citizens here and they don't know nothing what's going on?
I don't know.
The legal answer to that question, Mr. Smith, is no, we don't have the authority, the council doesn't have the authority to fire or remove them from office.
We could ask them to resign if they don't intend to take any more interest in the city.
He's kind of impatient. I believe they've had the same problem. I'll pass on it.
We'll be on research at full.
They are still being paid, aren't they?
Thanks, Glenn Moore. Anyone else? Dennis? Oh, I'm sorry.
Teresa.
I am hatching something over here that's been going around many times and that's just traffic. I own flowers for women, two twins probably. Traffic there, it's bad stuff, all went through the intersection. My people cannot get in, my people cannot get out. The red light down at Jefferson is useless. It needs to be taken down, covered up. Please, I beg you. I have so many people coming in the shop and complaining about that traffic. You wouldn't believe it, but maybe you go behind your back and say it, but they are very, very upset about how it is. And it's... Somebody's going to get hurt. Somebody's going to get hurt in a traffic accident there because it's awful. I have a lot of people coming to the shop and they say, we don't even go down any town. We go over the hill, pace, I never find all businesses because they can't get print tanks. And you know what that means? Tax revenue. And, you know, I wish that we just cover that light up for three months and give it a try and let's see how happy people are. Please, I beg you.
Teresa, yes. I'm going to throw this bowl of water at you. I'm kidding.
Roll it.
Cover up one day and take down that evening.
I know, I know. Let's try for three months. Three months. That's all I ask.
It's in the process.
I know. You know, I went to the same thing and then the vice city council made me with 18 months. I'm thinking, 18 months? That's a long time. That's a long time. It's a lot of tax revenue going out the door.
I think we need to mount the bullet and just do it all.
I think we need to mount the bullet and cover it up. And I know there's... I know that there's people, there's some businesses that don't want to cover it up. I know that. Shut up, Ken. But it's, I'm telling you, it is, there's more people that want it down than they are that want it up.
I don't mean I say nothing.
I know.
I don't, here, here, here's what the deal is. Here's, now, we can, we can cover it up.
Yeah.
Long as we don't take it down, we can cover it up, no matter what they say. But that bird's gonna come down. That light is gonna come down.
Like I said, I really have my, I'm not gonna go and get lost in that.
Now, we can go down and cover it up.
I'm thinking, you know, let's just...
You can, that's...
Call the security truck, let's go, let's take it down.
But now if it's covered up, guess who's gonna get the blame? I'll give myself one, and call me all they want. No matter what. I, I said it, said it, it's bad. Am I turning blue in the face? I turned it, I've let it test it.
You making that in form of a motion?
I'm making a motion, we cover it up.
Did we cover it up?
Yes.
Do we have a second to the motion?
Mayor, I would suggest if you wanna act on it,
since it's not on the agenda, let's, let's make a motion to waive the, uh...
The rules.
If we're on both of them.
What have you said, Carol?
You making a motion to waive the rule?
To, to act on it.
I make the motion with the waive the rule, yes.
Please, somebody come and sit at my parking lot.
I heard it, I heard it. Now they're gonna be mad, but I make a motion.
Do we have a second to waive the rules?
And put that on the agenda.
I, I will second, yes. Mr. Watts, will you please come to that meeting and pray for us before we begin?
I'll pray, I'm gonna have some to pray on. And we need to put a four-way stop sign in there, put stop signs.
I don't know. What the state, the state might not let us put stop signs.
I have before.
We have put stop signs.
Now we bagged it, then put stop signs coming off of Jefferson Avenue in this direction. Can we make a four-way stop? Can we make a four-way stop? I would make the four-way stop.
I don't think you can do, I don't think the state will let you do that.
Four-way stop on them State Highway?
You could put the stop signs up on either side of the State Highway.
Oh, yeah, we have, we have, we have voted.
Sure.
Well, let's vote and see if we're gonna waive the rules.
Yeah, we have, we have a motion and a second.
Yeah, most in a second to waive the rules. All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no. Okay, woo, okay, now the floor is open for a motion on that issue.
I'll make the motion, we, uh, cover the red light up.
Do we have a second?
I will second that motion.
Any discussion?
I'll go ahead and take that.
My phone running off the wall, watch.
All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no.
Is it you now?
I don't know. I didn't hear anybody. Ro call.
Doug?
Yes.
Costner?
No.
Hope?
Yes.
Passes.
Passes.
Bill?
Bag it. Who has to bag it?
Once I've covered it up, pass it down next day.
Do you bag it, Ben? Who puts the bag?
Well, it'll, it'll be...
Okay.
It will be bagged until further action of the council.
Teresa.
Is everybody okay with the signs too? Putting the stop signs? You got it, Ben?
Yeah, you have to do that.
Period of time it's to be bagged, is my question.
No.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, as soon as possible.
Soon as possible.
And the signs as soon as possible.
Is that the sign that should be there when it's bagged?
That's his story.
It's, it's bagged till further action of the council.
Yeah, because there wasn't a timeframe, but I...
No, bagged till...
Further action.
Okay. Dennis, you had a comment earlier.
I think we need to recognize Parks and Rec for the great job they did to fix this issue.
I agree.
I agree.
Do you have a check from Poe Sports that you're presenting to him, or?
Not.
Not to me, okay. Yes, John?
This is just a technical question for Terry. One time back, we had a controversial issue. Several weeks after the attack, somebody pointed out, we have three active council members who are city members. We're supposed to have five. So technically, how many votes do you have to pay in order for a motion to carry it?
You have to have a majority of who are present. You've gotta have three for a quorum, so when you have three, you need two votes.
Uh, Chief, I'd like for you to briefly, or however long it takes, to explain the problem at the red light at the railroad crossing.
Not a virtue, your office.
It doesn't matter.
Yeah, let's have Dartson.
Jimmy and I have been concerned about that one. We're still trying to find out for sure exactly what the communication problem is. But the traffic indicator or signal loop is broken in front of what would have been the Freddie Greggs mother-in-law's floor shop many years ago. But it is not operating. It's not signaling the light to change. We're in the process of trying to, he and I, he's actually done the legwork on this part. Trying to find out, I've talked to Nathan Vatter. He says that the, uh, that he has, that he's not sure if that's, if it's still under warranty. I've talked to Richard McNabb at the state DOT. He's not sure if it's still under warranty. They're gonna check and notify us. If not, I, I think it's one of those things that we just have to have done. We need to get whoever does that to fix that loop. And hopefully, that'll make a difference in that traffic.
Let's fix the loop and send the state to bid.
I'm for it. Fix it in the morning.
And have a BO first.
I'm serious. We need to fix.
Yeah.
Now, not later. And, and I would defer again to the utilities as far as, I, I know if I call Gary Reagan, or actually, what I do, I call them, they call Gary Reagan and tell him what we need done as far as the boxes and the lights. And I don't know who would have to do the loop.
I think the Russian actually contracts that out, they may have their own people. They, they, it just needs to schedule it. I think it's something they have to cut a new loop. From what I understand, what it's saying, it may, may always be to replace it. And it might be able to splice it out.
Not sure if it'd have to be sawed back out or just spliced in the loop.
What we're trying to do right now is like, I mean, he said, we're trying to find out if it's still under warranty. If it is, then the contract that established should be held, can't be moved to the back.
Well, do we need to make the motion that y'all give your authority to get it done? But we got a little money left there, we have to, we can borrow, we can like this. That light needs to be fixed. We don't need it. How do we get through here, it's two months down the road in this street instead of a month? We can't get it done.
I don't, I don't think that light's any different than any other in town. If we've got a broken loop, it's just something that's gotta be fixed to make it operate.
Make it operate.
As soon as we can find out if it's under warranty, we'll just have to do what we have to do to get, make that s, loop work again.
With warranty or not, well.
Yeah, right. I mean, it, it's just, it's no different if it was at Walgreens, we'd still have to, to have the loop fixed.
If any perfection stands and the other two new ones like it, they belong to the city. So any magnets or whatever, as far as that goes, will be up for the city back there.
We would, uh, part of the, what we have to do.
Wouldn't they give you permission to do it? And Kyle James says, what the man is, and if it's not extraordinary, he can go in, tell you to give permission to do it.
I think the difference is, and I've not, I've not been involved in this. I know, I knew that, that it's broken. We've talked about that, as far as trying to find out about the warranty. The only thing that I would think you might be doing to is if it's, if it's covered by the warranty, they have their own people that does the work.
Right.
So if it's covered by the warranty, they probably wouldn't let you pick somebody else and then them pay them. Because they, they, a lot of times, they do their own work, or they just have their own subcontractors who perform that work for them. So if it's covered by the warranty, we, we would have, if we want to try to take advantage of the warranty,